Gentlemen, it's six o'clock.
Nice.
All right, folks, I'm gonna call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, May 17th, 2016. Is there anyone here to speak to something that is not on the agenda?
I have a question. In the definitions from 10.1 for parking section, I just read it quickly, I wanna ask you here. Driveway is space booked in a lot which is not more than 15 feet in width for residential use nor more than 24 feet in width for business, commercial, institutional, or industrial uses. Now, this is the key part, at the lot line. So my anticipation is that after the lot line, you can widen if you want. Is that correct?
I require a reread. What section are you in here?
10.1.
10.131.
10.131?
10.13, general parking area designation.
Definition.
So you wanna know if you can go wider after the line?
Yeah, now, what's the nature of the question here?
He says, when you read the definition, it says, "At the lot line," is the, I'm reading it, is the width. If you read that literally.
Space looked in a lot which is not more than 15 feet in width for residential uses nor more than 24 feet in width for business, commercial, institutional, or industrial uses, at the lot line, built for access to a garage or off-street parking or loading space.
So I guess I'm asking, can you have a follow?
24 feet, 24 feet from the lot line.
I don't know that we can give like an advisory opinion on this, I guess it's probably, yeah, we can, okay.
That's all, I just wanted to read that up.
We'll check it out.
Yep.
Thanks, David.
I'm sorry, I was trying, I was fumbling trying to get my act together here, so my clerk is not here.
I just wanna know if you read this literally, that you can go wider after the lot line.
Not more than 24 feet in width for business, at the lot line.
I'm in total opinion.
You could, you could go either way, probably. Okay.
All right, was there somebody else here that had a public comment? Yes, sir, why don't you come up to the podium and introduce yourself to the crowd?
Where do you want me to go?
Can you go to the podium there?
That's an open question.
Where do you want me to go? Good evening.
Good evening.
Only one answer?
Good evening, sir.
You know, I'm a senior. I'm 86 years old. Why is it that you members of the board talk so quietly amongst yourselves when this is supposed to be a public meeting? We're supposed to all hear you. So, my challenge to you young people, Chet, that's you too, is, can you please talk louder so I can hear what goes on? That's my request for this evening's meeting. And Jessica, everybody should have a microphone.
We do have a microphone, the system is, is that it records to the tape, it doesn't amplify in here.
That's the worst thing. Don't we have enough money?
That's definitely beyond our purview here on the planning board to get microphones, but if you can't hear at any point, let us know and we can speak up.
You're talking a little bit loud now, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I didn't know that was a problem, but that's good to know. Thank you for the feedback.
Excuse me, are you referring to when you're listening to your TV at home, or when you're sitting here in the council chambers?
Sitting right here, sir.
Sitting here, okay. I was just wondering if it's not picking up loud enough back there.
And I can hear you too.
I got a big mouth.
No, you don't, no you don't. But you know what the audiologists say? Females' voices are most difficult for us seniors to hear. I'm a senior. And you.
I don't think I have a problem talking loud, Eddie. I've thrown you out of my office enough.
My next conference call.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along to the planning board minutes for May 3rd. Did everyone have a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, any changes, omissions, anything?
Not for me.
Yeah, I got a mistake.
What's that? On page four. It says, "Harry asks what the cost was to file an appeal, it's cost, not cost."
Gotcha.
Can you just mark it up on that version?
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else?
A motion to approve the minutes for May 3rd with the aforementioned modification from Harry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain.
Thank you, Libby. All right. No A and Rs tonight, is that right, Jessica?
No A and Rs.
All right. New business, site plan approval for 84 and a half Cottage Street, Timothy St. John. Is there someone here to speak to that? Sir, you wanna come on down? All right, we state your name and address for the record for us.
Timothy St. John, 26 Maple Street, East Hampton, Mass.
Thank you. So you wanna give us a little description about what you're proposing here?
We are proposing at 84 and a half Cottage Street to open up a small deli and sandwich shop. There'll be no fried foods, no rendering of any animal proteins. There will be no changes to the existing structure, and I believe that all other resources are in place for the business moving forward.
Okay, and just to clarify, this was part of the off-the-map site plan approval a few months ago, right, Jessica?
Correct.
And we had a description of something that might be coming in, and this is, that's something.
Correct, so off-the-map, when they came for their permit, they were unclear on whether they wanted to do a restaurant or not, and I think in the end had determined that they wanted to do a tattoo-removal location, so the board had requested that they remove the restaurant portion of the description from the permit until they actually had a client in place that would rent the space, and requesting somebody to come back to discuss it.
Okay, and our department comments, did you see this from the health department about a kitchen plan that they haven't, you haven't been to the health department yet, is that correct?
We have not, we are in contact with the health department, they are the, I believe, the last department that we have yet to meet with at the site.
Okay. You folks have any questions at this point?
Sort of discussed some of the possibilities at the last meeting, although we couldn't, I should say, the one, the meeting with regard to off-the-map.
Right.
But we didn't get into any of the nitty-gritties of trash removal, how are you getting rid of trash?
There is a dumpster on-site that we will be able to buy into, so we'll be paying monthly to co-rent that with the off-the-map people. And I believe it's Joe, the building owner, it's under his purview.
Okay, how about deliveries? Do you have expectations about deliveries?
We do, although our deliveries won't be large, we do expect maybe three to four different deliveries a week. There are double doors at the rear of the building that lead into the basement, that area is clear all the way to the storage facility that we'll be using underneath the portion of the building we'll occupy.
I don't recall how the access works. When the, when their shop is closed, is there access to your portion, to your deli, or how does?
When, when the, the street side is closed, yeah, absolutely, there's a third door, it's a completely independent space, yeah.
It doesn't look like it's actually connected at all to the off-the-map, is there any way to sort of access inside from your space into there?
Yeah, there's a couple ways. The rear door to the building that we would occupy opens into a hallway which is connected to what is the lobby of the old theater.
Okay.
So there's that, and then there's also basement access to all, all spaces.
Okay. And you mentioned, the only work you need to do is venting for the stove?
Yeah, and even that is under review at this point, that we may be using an alternate cooking system where we may not even need to vent for the stove, but if we do, that's really the only work, that and some of the minor plumbing that would need to be adjusted for the sink drainage.
Okay. And there's some discussion in here about hours, it looks like your plan is to do 10 to 7 right now?
It is.
Seven days a week, or?
Seven days a week.
Okay. And then, there's sort of a mention of possibly extending those hours, would that only be if you got the beer and wine license?
No, that would also be anytime that the community has any opportunities that we could take advantage of, that would be outside of those regular operating hours.
Yep.
And also interior catering for any events that off-the-map may host in the rear of the building.
Okay.
And other than that, that would be.
So, when you're, when you're talking about, I think you mentioned like art walk and other things like that, what do you expect your extended hours would be for an event like that?
My assumption would be 9:00 PM would be the latest that we would be doing that.
And you expect that would be sort of an exceptional situation, you're not planning on doing that?
Not on a regular basis at all.
On a regular basis, okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Let me ask one, if I didn't hear it right. You had mentioned catering, are you doing catering out of there also?
No, well, the catering will just be the small events that off-the-map hosts, they generally will have like a 10 to 20 people coming in there on a monthly basis.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure, sure.
And, and nothing unusual as far as like water use or any other city amenities, right?
No.
It's just sort of, okay, is there a bathroom in that area?
There is.
Okay. Do you expect to have people eating in there, or is it all gonna be takeout, or?
The majority is gonna be takeout, we do hope to have a small handful of people, but the site is very small.
Yeah.
So once the design layout is done, we'll see what we can do for tables, but we're not relying on too much seated service.
Okay. Anybody else, I think we've covered the site plan approval stuff both on this and on the prior application. Do you guys have any questions? Anybody else here from the public have any comments or questions?
You're working with an consultant, I'll just say that.
Okay, is that all you wanna say?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else, any comments, questions? All right, planning department, any comments or questions?
No, not at this time.
All right, can I get a motion then?
Uh, I guess.
84 and a half Cottage Street.
Motion to approve the site plan approval for 84 and a half Cottage Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who seconded?
Chet did.
Oh, Jim made the motion.
Jim made the motion, Chet seconded. I'm trying to speak up, I'm sorry.
I'm out of practice.
Any opposition? Abstentions? No. All right. All right, so...
So, the next step is, I'll be drafting decision within the next 14 days, and once it's time stands by the city clerk, you're good to go, there's no appeal period.
Okay.
And I'll email it to you and stick a copy in the mail to you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck.
All right. Next up, special permit, site plan approval for 184 North Hampton Street, A to Z Storage. Come on down.
Good evening, my name is Phil Cannon, Icegate Architects. We're here before you tonight, representing A to Z Properties, Dave Boyle, Dave Boyle from the Icegate, got any questions? He can probably help you just as much as I can on it. But we're, we're here before you tonight, asking for approval for amended site plans that were approved a couple of years ago for the same site. That site plan is this one right here, which basically was going to rebuild onto and rehab and kind of severely remodel the old motel building that was kind of set back on the site, and we were gonna retain the existing building, if you're looking at the site from North Hampton Street to the right. That's, that's the daycare center right now, right, Dave? And we went through planning board site, site plan approval, we also went through conservation commission approval for the project, that included submitting plans for stormwater management and complying with all the zoning regulations. You can see, I'm just kind of showing this to you so you can kind of subtly remind yourself of what the site looked like a couple of years ago. Basically, parking between the two buildings, kind of a circular traffic pattern with the center of the parking area devoted for stormwater management and landscaping. We had access to refuse enclosure off of a little spur to the side, left side of the building. The main entrance coming off of North Hampton Street with a divided island for the two-way traffic. And so, what we were going to do was to, because of all the wetland constraints and everything else in the back half of the site, this was the most developable part of the site, and this is all we were proposing to do and subsequently got approval for. So, fast forward now, the client, Dave Boyle, had some time to think about some other options, and the viability of the, of the building design that was presented to you back then, and wanted to kind of revisit the design a little bit. They felt that a new building design was more in tune to the model of their retail rental leasing options, and plus they, they wanted to kind of do a little bit more with, with apartment rentals as well for the second floor. Very similar, very similar kind of use here, where the retail commercial was devoted to the first floor, ground floor, and we had eight units of one-bedroom apartments on the second floor. So, we have submitted plans to the planning board, requesting an amendment to the site plan for this layout, basically taking the two buildings that we have in this site plan and consolidated into the back of the site where the larger building was, into three buildings, approximately 55 by 66 feet for each building. We also are proposing to eliminate this building as well, right here, for this design option with the three buildings. Again, A to Z Properties feels that this is a better model for their leasing options, and also, I think this would probably update their infrastructure, the existing building that we're gonna keep is a little updated as well. But as you can see from the two site plans in here, I like to kind of keep a hold of upstairs, so you can kind of see the differences in here. The parking design, the parking layout, circulation is virtually the same, but because of the layout, we had an option, and the removal of this building here, we had an opportunity to, to kind of make the island in the, in the middle of the parking area a little bit larger, and so therefore could handle a little bit more stormwater management. Also, it's, it becomes a little bit of a larger landscape element as well for the Where the existing building once stood, we're proposing to landscape that, so we've shown it on the detailed plans that were submitted to the planning board, additional landscaping and street, tree plantings as well. There are some subtle differences in the building square footage, but virtually they're the same, there's only about a 1,700 square foot difference from the old plan to the new plan, additional space, but most of that is kind of common space, it won't be devoted for any kind of use. And that was by design because we kind of maxed out the buildable part of the site, so we had, we had certain constraints that we had to kind of maintain from the original site plans. So, we had to kind of maintain the same amount of parking, we have one less parking space than the previous site, but we're well within the requirements for the square footage for the commercial space and for the apartments, which is kind of the major difference where we were proposing eight apartment units before, we are now proposing 12. So there'll be four units in each, each building here for a total of 12 apartments. Again, there's sufficient parking, they meet the zoning regulations as, as well. We still have access to refuse enclosure area off to the side over in here, and as I mentioned, the parking is virtually the same, we're just, we're one less space short. The access to or off of North Hampton Street is exactly the same as what was approved previously. The other slight little difference is that we had kind of a play yard put off to the side on our previous site plan over in this area right here, but because of the new building layout, we have located in the back of the building. We feel that, and this is gonna be a play area for the childcare facility.
So that's staying?
Pardon?
That, is your intention that they stay? They're still a part of us, even though the building's gone?
Right, yes, I, I think that A to Z is, we'll move them into one of the buildings once they're complete. So, these buildings can be constructed because they're outside the footprint of the original or the existing building, so they'll build that and then move them in, and they'll have this play area for its use as well. So there's a little bit of a circulation system, pedestrian circulation around the buildings for access to the entrances, to the stairwells to get out to the second floor apartments, that's all shown on the plan as well. The landscaping is virtually the same as the previous plan, and as I mentioned before, we were able to, to add a few more trees on this, on this side over here where the previous daycare building was located. And to, with regard to utilities, I remember we virtually have the same kind of stormwater management design as we had before. The, the three separate buildings presented us a little bit of a challenge in that we are sewer-ing them, each, each building individually, they'll connect to an existing sewer system that goes down by the property line here and services the apartments in the area, so that was addressed as well. The other thing that was addressed is that these plans were simultaneously submitted to the conservation commission for their approval for the modification and review of the stormwater management system as well, and that was last Monday, I believe, was, was reviewed, and they subsequently approved the modifications for the new layout for the storm drainage system, the stormwater management plan, and our, our concept for dealing with drainage for the site. So, that probably, I think, would, would speak kind of highly to, you know, our attention to the details on the site in here, and we believe we actually probably improved the site a little bit in updating all the buildings on the site, and anticipate this being a better quality project than what was previously envisioned for the site. Let's see if, I wanna make sure I just got everything. Just a cup, just a couple subtleties in here, since the last project was approved, the zoning bylaw under section 8.12, the planned business development, was modified from a five-acre minimum for multiple buildings on the same lot, we now, that was reset to three acres. And we have 3.8 acres on the site in here, which accommodates or complies with the zoning for the multiple buildings as well. So, the only other thing that I wanted to kind of mention to you, we submitted those plans to you subsequently because of the ongoing negotiations with the engineer and the conservation commission, we had to make a few slight modifications, especially with respect to addressing runoff from the roof, and we have shown some roof drains and dealing with the roof drains from the buildings and have accommodated, you know, dealing with, with how they're gonna be drained. That was kind of a concern with the conservation commission, and that was kind of addressed, and so we've shown that, we've revised the plan and shown that on the plan. The other thing, the other item that was, we had, we, on the plans that we recently submitted for amendment, we showed two park, handicap parking spaces, and Jessica was helpful in alerting to the fact that we needed three, so we addressed that shortcoming as well. We had three on the previous, the original plans, but for some reason in the transition, the revisions of the plans, that we kind of lost sight of that in my office a little bit, so we, we put that back into the plan.
Where are they now?
They're in the same location, up in this area right in here, again, they're shown on that plan, I just submitted it to Jessica, and we submitted copies back to her that show the three handicap parking spaces. So that meets the, the local requirements for handicap parking for this number of parking spaces as well. So I apologize for having to resubmit the revised plans of the revised plan. It was a matter of just kind of catching up to, you know, what, what the conservation commission needed for their revisions, but, and then plus this handicap space revision.
Jessica, so is the planning department comfortable that they've met all the parking requirements? I know there's commercial, residential, and handicap requirements here.
Yeah, so as I sort of tried to put in the technical memo to the board, is, they were required to have 45 spaces, based on the additional residential and the square footage for the commercial, they show 47, so, you know, as long as they can accommodate for those three handicap parking spaces, I don't know how we interpret the handicap parking, whether the ordinance, whether it's additional to the baseline, or whether, as long as they're in there in terms of the mix, it's unclear, I went and tried to resolve that between the two ordinances, because the parking's in the general ordinance, it's not in the zoning ordinance.
But either way, we're allowed to give a waiver on the parking requirements, right?
You can do a waiver under the plans, unit development, zoning, so I, I think it's fine, it is common, it meets all of the standards.
Did we also get in writing from ComCom to the planning board that they did approve the plan, just to be on the safe side, I guess?
Yes, hold on, wrong file. They submitted, I think I sent it to you, maybe I didn't.
I didn't get any department comments on this.
Oh, you didn't?
Uh-uh, no.
Oh, sorry, my bad, my bad. So, they wrote, "Conservation Commission discussed proposed modifications, found that the changes are within the scope, footprint, and character of the original work, approved under order of conditions for MASTIEP File 151-276, no further permitting under Wetlands Protection Act required."
Any other department comments?
Jackie Duda had no concerns about the project, and ZBA had no comment.
I know we talked about this last time with the, with the project, but I'm trying to remember, so the, the plan is for the first floor to be commercial, is, is there gonna be a retail component, or we don't know yet, is that the idea?
It's gonna be more office.
That's the idea?
Yeah.
And then the second floor of each of the three buildings is where the residential units will be? And there's four extra residential units from last time, right?
Correct.
And the, and the commercial 111 extra square feet, does that sound right? It's slightly larger?
Yeah, well, based on some calculations I did, we're about, yeah... we're about, yeah, 111, somewhere in that range, four square feet and everything else.
Alright, sorry Jessica.
I mean, it's, you know, there's a few more stairwells in these footprints in here and a few more bathrooms. And so we try to kind of take them out as common space that aren't really, you know, dedicated or required for the parking.
Yep, okay.
Memory Service, we did a site visit.
Yes, we did.
And the building was dated. So this change, I think, is overall a good thing for the community. The play area in the back fenced in?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
What kind of fencing?
It'll be a chain link, probably vinyl clad chain link, so it's a lower maintenance. It's in the back, will have a lot of privacy. We didn't really feel we needed to put solid screen panels up in it like we did previously because it was on the side of the building.
Is it your intention that the daycare would be in the center of the three buildings right next to it or do you know?
Yet to be determined.
Yet to be determined?
I mean, they're all within, I presume it would be either this one or this one in here.
Because it's close to the play area?
And it's, yeah, pretty, yeah, pretty divided.
Is there any handicap access or ramps at the commercial, the first floor level for any of the three buildings?
Yes, the handicap parking spaces are accommodated with adjacent sidewalks and they will have ramps so that they can get from the parking space on the sidewalks, okay? And from the sidewalks, they can get into the first floor of each building. They're slab on grade type of construction. So they don't have to have long ramps, you know, to get up a typical height of a wood type of construction, you know, residential type of construction with a basement. They'll all be handicap accessible, yes.
What about loading and unloading for the commercial spaces? Where will that take place?
Well, you mean as in loading docks per se?
Or just, yeah, where will deliveries, things like that?
Well, again, it's office space, it's usually anticipated. That's pretty low activity. It can happen anywhere during the day. But the parking area, the parking circulation has been designed so that there's a loop that comes in front of the buildings in here, which they can just pull adjacent to. And if they need to kind of make a delivery like FedEx or something like that, they can just park, parallel park to the sidewalk and there's sufficient room to get by.
There's clearance to have another car to pass them there?
Yes, yes.
You'd said that there are 12 residential slots in the upper portion. Is it your intention to divide for 12 for the commercial and the bottom two or less? Is it two in each or how?
At the moment, each building has two office spaces. Someone could rent the whole space. The body will, it's not very...
On the traffic patterns there, is that meant to be a one-way loop or is there going to be two lanes of travel essentially in each direction?
We had this, I think that we had some discussion about this at the last, before the original site plan and that we felt comfortable about a one-way situation kind of coming around the parking area from right, then coming around left. So that you can kind of enter here and go this way and kind of come around this way here. It wouldn't necessarily stop somebody from kind of coming around this way if they wanted to get into a parking space because the driveways are plenty wide enough for two-way traffic. So it's a little flexible. But we had signage and everything else that we'll put up to indicate that direction of the traffic.
And remind me again, I remember we discussed whether there was going to be a right turn lane coming out of there?
That was next.
That was next, is that right?
That was next and, you jogged my memory here.
Was that, that was the state, was it?
Right, it did not, the, having, you know, three lanes was too wide. And they wanted to keep it narrowed down, which I didn't mind either. So we responded to the state requirements of just keeping it one-way, one drive coming in, one drive exiting.
So just so I have it clear in the minutes, so you said that you're going to post signage to direct traffic to go in that circular route, but you're not going to, it's not going to be sort of mandated? Somebody could cut over? I just want to make sure I have it right, that's all.
Well, there's plenty of visibility around this whole parking area so that they could kind of see if they, especially if somebody that uses the parking lot a lot, that they could kind of bear to the left. In other words, they enter into the site here, they could bear to the left and kind of come around into parking instead of going all the way around.
But the signage is going to be directing them that way to go in that counterclockwise?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought we, I think we felt that that was a good system to have there.
That makes sense.
What about lighting?
We still have the same ambitions for our lighting. That didn't change except just kind of pushed apart a little bit because we made the interior landscape in the rain garden a little bit bigger. But it would be, we would have poles that are shown on the site plan, located to light the parking areas and to light the travel ways as well.
But they're hooded, right? The hooded light poles, yeah.
Yes, right, and the zoning stipulates that they should be no higher than 15 feet high. And like I said, we'll, you know, so...
I see six in the main lot, is that right? One, two, three, four, five, six?
Eight, we've got eight actually, there's two here.
Yeah.
Four.
Oh, there's two in the middle.
Two in the middle.
Yeah, you're right.
We've got actually 10, 10 lights over there, so...
Do the buildings?
Yeah, there's lighting on the buildings?
Yes, they'll be, well, there's always this wall park, wall packs and everything else for the emergency exits and everything else. But the fronts will be properly lit for accessibility and everything else as well. With building-mounted lighting.
Will there be lights on the back too? Or just the front of the building?
You know, they're probably, I think, yeah, there probably will be some lighting, but it'll be security kind of lighting too.
Kind of think of the peepers.
That's total, I mean, you know me and my spring peepers. Can't throw off the frogs. And there's, I mean, there's, I mean, they're back there, but there's residences on that side.
Right, yeah, it's still quite a difference. And you can see, you know, the highlighted area, the dark green, all that vegetation is not going to, is going to be left, is going to be left under dirt. So there is a buffer to the wetland area from the building. Yeah, but the lighting will be hooded, you know, we want to kind of protect the dark sky issues and everything else, so...
And dumpsters on site, is that right? Where are those?
In this area right here.
Okay, so we lost that kind of, the other plan had that little side street, right?
Right, it has this, I call it a spur, this little spur in here.
Which was going to be dumpsters?
It also has parking.
And snow removal, right? Wasn't that, wasn't that part of the snow removal plan too?
Well, there's plenty of room for snow removal besides that.
Where?
Where? On the sides of the roadways, on the sides of the parking area. We can't put any snow in the rain garden area.
Right.
Okay, and so if there's a burden of that, then that will have to be dealt with on an individual storm basis.
So there's sidewalks along the sides of that parking lot there, right?
Correct.
Okay, so is your plan to put the snow over the sidewalks in the winter or?
Yeah, it'll have to be, it'll have to be pushed from the parking to the sidewalk and then from the sidewalk to the back of the sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, because the sidewalks are right adjacent to the parking area.
Right.
You know, you're not going to be able to kind of keep snow piled up and right, you know, separating the parking from the sidewalk. But this was also, it made up the 47 or 48 parking spaces, this little spur right in here.
Right.
Because of the building arrangements and everything else, I had to kind of slightly modify the parking area to fit the parking within the major loop right here and everything else.
Okay.
I'm, I'm looking at Section 8.155A and wondering if this plan meets those requirements. It says, "Parking may be located to the side or rear of the structure. No parking shall be permitted within the required front yard setback of a structure."
So the, so the front yard setback is actually from the front property line?
Uh-huh.
So the front property line?
And how deep is the setback?
It's not shown on this, but it's about right here.
And how, and how deep is the setback?
I don't have my zoning book you do, but if you go to the dimensional section, it'll tell you what the front setback has to be for commercial properties before all that dimensions.
We have it on the detail plans right here.
And I think also it uses the term "may", it doesn't say "shall".
It says, "May be located on the side or rear."
So given the fact that the whole back is wetlands, it's not like, they don't have any other options. It's not like if it was totally open and they had the ability to do that, then that's a different story, but...
So the front setback is 30 feet.
We're not in your front here.
No, I know you're not.
Okay, I can't find it.
So 30, so 30 feet is right along the edge of the...
Before the parking began, meaning that they comply? The dumpsters and trash, and this is just because I'm having a little trouble reading it. Is that, is the lines here to denote an actual fencing around it or, so there's?
Yes, there will be a screen, six-foot height, screen fence around the three sides of it that are facing the street, facing the back, facing the sidewalk where the existing apartments are. In addition to that, we have shown some, you know, landscaping around that as well, so.
Any other questions from the board?
I have one question remaining. This section here that's shown in white on mine and on yours, it's an empty white space above the tree, yeah, what is, what's that?
That's the existing parking area for the adjacent Lukitar places. This is this building right here.
Okay.
So they, some of that parking is on this property here, which they've got Eastman's floor and everything else.
Okay.
Chartered Communications in the front, there's a hair salon in there.
And that'll all?
So that's all their parking.
That'll all remain the same up there?
Yes, correct.
Okay, parking.
Right.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public have any comments, questions? Yes, sir?
I would be very supportive of the committee granting the approval of what the request is from Mr. David Boyle. He's a very intelligent businessman and he has a good left and right-hand architect doing the work. I think the presentation was excellent. I was only concerned about the water and I think I'm satisfied. So my support would be strongly, and I mean very strongly, in favor of the committee granting his approval. And just think, we're going to have a new building, extra taxes, and perhaps David could ask the mayor or the mayor rep, however it might be, to maybe have an audio system.
I like the way you tied that all in, that was very impressive.
Thank you, Mr. Fedor.
Alright, duly noted. Anybody else have any comments, questions, ideas about how we can get an audio system in here?
Hi, my name is Anthony Gleason, I am an employer of David in several pieces there. And I haven't had a real good opportunity to see the new plan, I knew what was going on before. But I know that if the care that was needed to go into the first plan is gone into this, I'm fully aware, I'm good with it. My property is at 179 across the street from that.
Okay.
I'm good with this.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Boyle?
I just want to add one thing. When we came in prior, just, we had a pre-existing non-conforming use. So we got permits from you guys and the zoning board. And that's why we stayed with two buildings at that time, one reason. But when we tore down the motel, the zoning had changed and as we were on the site, it just became apparent that we should, it's kind of like moving furniture, you do it two or three times to be comfortable and it just seemed to lay out better. And then the prices for the first concept, because of the stairwells and stuff, this one not coming in, they weren't cooperating. This is going to be an easier, more user-friendly project.
Any other comments or questions? Board have any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment that this is an easy process. Every now and then we come across a few of those where things are well put together. Mr. Cannon, thank you. We appreciate that, it makes our job easier. I'd also like to comment, I mentioned this before, that the building that was there originally, this looks to me to be a significant upgrade. And given that we've gone through our due diligence, which I think we have, I think this is a move up for our community.
Jessica Planning, have any questions, comments, concerns?
No, but I just want to sort of put it together for everybody that how important zoning is. And because of the zoning change and how that sort of created more flexibility, that's allowed a better project to come forward. And I think it's important to recognize that even though the zoning is huge and it's hard to weed through sometimes, that the details are really are important and it really can have a significant impact on the types of projects that the community sees. So just to recognize the importance of that, so.
I might be crazy, but I seem to recall being in a meeting where we were discussing the move from five to three and something. And I think you were even involved perhaps in that discussion, which may have potentially stood against you. And so I just, I think you're a good citizen, David Boyle, you're a good citizen. I motion...
Sorry, do we need to, do we need to do the parking waiver?
Well, I guess we need to determine as a board whether we think there needs to be a waiver. So it calls for the 45 spots and I don't think it's clear that the three handicap spots, needs to be three additional or three of. But I think that to cover ourselves...
I've always interpreted it as adding three on because, because the way that the handicap parking is triggered is, depending on the number of spaces that are there, determines how many handicap parking spaces you need. So if it was, if there was 39 spaces in the base, then only two spaces would have been required. But if there's 40 spaces that are required from the zoning, then you need three handicap spaces. So I've just always added it on, but I think it's kind of unclear and it could be, it could go either way.
I think it's probably better to be safe and treat it as a waiver.
So that's a separate item, that's not necessarily a condition, right? We need to...
I think we can waive that as part of our motion.
To 48, is that, 48 is the requirement? Give you the number specification here, we currently have 47 spots.
So 45 is what's required plus three handicap spaces. So there's 48 that would be required, they're presenting 47. So they're asking for a waiver for one space.
But making clear that it's not one of the handicap spaces that's being waived.
That's, yes, it cannot, they cannot, yeah, I would not...
47 spaces included and three of those being...
Waiving one regular parking space.
One regular.
I motion to approve the special permit for 184 North Hampton Street with the condition that we waive the requirement for one regular parking space.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Alright.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, give me two weeks to draft the decision. It's what I got, it's what the law gives me.
Good luck, folks, thank you. Alright, moving right along to the sign ordinance.
Okay.
Oh, come on, the sign ordinance is the best part.
Now for the fun.
Now the fun begins.
Alright, just give me a minute here.
Yep.
Oh, sure.
All right, so I have to take minutes and lead this discussion, so.
We'll go slowly.
May I ask what happened to our clerk?
She's not feeling well. Okay. Thank you. Have a good night. Okay, so.
Moving right along.
Okay, so this latest and greatest version, which is now draft number three. And I, like I've said, I'm using the track changes, so the stuff that's additions is in red. I'll explain why I added "and intent" at ten-one later on. I left those definitions for the awning sign, the standing sign, and the wall sign, and I haven't populated it with anything as of yet. I've eliminated the language "any illuminated sign" under the window sign, like we discussed at the last meeting, so that's now done. I changed from building inspector to building commissioner to be consistent. I made the changes as we discussed at the last meeting in terms of referring to the scales. So instead of saying "shall be" to "allegable engineer's scale," I've just deleted that language and just said "drawn to scale." So that's for the next three sections. Under processing time, permanent issuance, I scratch incomplete and accurate. So it just says, "The building commissioner shall process all signed permit applications within thirty days of the building commissioner's receipt of a complete application." I deleted the S. And the appropriate fee. So that was the board's recommendation for that. Failure to act, we've reversed it now. So instead of with the, if no permit's been issued within thirty days, it shall be deemed to be denied. We've now changed that to be approved to make it more consistent with other zoning permits and processes. Permit revocation, so there was an S that was missing and that was added. All of the standards we haven't got to yet, so we're going to jump to the appeals process. And this is really sort of where we got a little bit hung up last time. So I did a little bit of research and I'm throwing different language out there, but we can absolutely do whatever we feel like we want to do here. So let's just start at the beginning. So appeals, so the ZBA is the special permit authority for all special permits for signs. So circumstances in which a special permit may be sought. So I've added two things here based on our discussion. So one, was anyone aggrieved by a decision of the building commissioner in regards to the signed permit? May appeal to the ZBA within thirty days of the issuance or denial of the signed permit. So where I'm just a little bit confused is. You can, anybody can appeal any decision from the, I mean, that's a normal thing and it would automatically go to the ZBA. So it seems like it's duplicating that unless.
Also, I don't think that scenario is a special permit.
No.
I mean, that's an appeal of a building inspector's decision.
Right, so I am feeling like that should not be part of it, but that's how it was crafted the last time we met and we went round and round and round about.
Right.
So are you thinking just anyone in regards to the signed permit may appeal?
But anybody can appeal a building commissioner's decision, no matter what.
So it should be anyone?
It shouldn't even be in there at all because it's just a standard.
It would just strike the whole.
But don't we like this general theory that somebody can come and walk through this one section on signs and they don't have to go to section ten point nine or whatever and find out that you can appeal any building inspector's?
So I mean, that's the flip side.
But I don't think it belongs under the section for a special permit. I mean, a special permit is something separate where it doesn't meet the requirements and you've gone to the ZBA to try to explain whatever our standard is, right?
So, okay, so.
Or it should say, or this is meant to say "signed permit" and not "special permit."
Well, it says in regards to the signed permit. May appeal to the zoning board of appeals.
You mean at ten point oh eight five one?
And to the.
That's the special permit granting authority.
Right.
Circumstances in which a special permit may be sought.
Right, I mean, that, so B to me looks like it's a circumstance in which a special permit could be sought.
And that's sort of where I started heading. So let's just skip A for a second and let's go to B. So unusual site conditions that may warrant signed standards not otherwise permitted by this section. And then I threw this in here just for, you know, fun, for kicks. Because I saw this in another ordinance. So it sets restrictions on how much of a deviation from the zoning they can actually grant, which I think was kind of an interesting spin to it. Now, I don't know if these numbers make sense or whether, you know, I don't know if it makes sense for our community, but I just, I'm putting it out there for a discussion. So any of the following aspects of a permanent sign are eligible for consideration for an exception, provided that the maximum allowable deviation is twenty-five percent of the requirement. So in sign area, sign height, sign location, onsite only, and copy height, which we don't even have something for copy height. So that's, you know, a question. But, so for sign area, so say somebody says this, because of these strange circumstances of the way that my building is sighted or whatever, almost like a variance to some extent in a way.
Right, that's what we talked about last time. And I think that's kind of the standard to have, is that it's got to be exceptional and unique to the property.
It's got to be unique to the property, but then it also limits. So this is where it, I think, could be problematic is, think of the Eastworks sign.
Right.
And that's way bigger than twenty-five percent of the deviation of what's allowed under that zone right now. So.
But we hope to avoid that by having different standards for that.
Maybe. But that's the example that pops into my head is there's a situation where we've got, again, but that district is unique.
Right.
So.
I mean, I think when we talked about this last time, we discussed the idea that if you're giving out sort of exceptions regularly, that it's probably a sign that your bylaw isn't written well. And that where we, one of the few things that we have the ability to regulate separately and distinctly is based on the zoning district. So we can have a different sign ordinance for the mill industrial or something like that. Right, a different section defining what is and is not permissible there.
Right.
And so, I mean, I think it's good to have some sort of exceptional circumstance where you can go to the ZBA and try to make your case. But I also think if we're sort of like handcrafting each district, their bylaws, I don't, I have a hard time coming up with something that. If you're trying to say it for all of East Hampton, then it's different what you're going to have on, you know, the new sandwich shop versus the side of Eastworks. But if you're doing a different requirement for each of those zones, I mean, my hope is that it's not something that's going to really come up.
Right, and I think what we've found a little bit, I'd have to go back. We did, I had Jamie, the assistant planner, do an analysis at one point. I don't know if I can still find it, but I asked her to look to see how many times somebody came to the ZBA to request a deviation from the sign ordinance and what they were asking for. And some of them were completely legit, odd circumstances. And some of them were just people who just didn't like what they had, but they had the ability to go to the ZBA and ask for something different, and oftentimes they got it.
Right.
So that's where I have more of an issue. It's like if their standards, there should be some equitable administration of that. And just because somebody doesn't like something, you know, and that's sort of the ZBA's fault in a way for being like, sure.
Something like variances which have a very high standard.
Right.
Depending on which town you're in, they give them out like candy or they don't. And so I do kind of like the twenty-five percent or something like that, because then even if you're sort of feeling lenient, there's only so much deviation that you're allowed to give.
Right.
Now, would there be grandfathering for pre-existing signs?
Yes, there always is.
So something like the Eastworks would also be called by that?
Absolutely. But, you know, there's, on Pleasant Street right now, so there's Eastworks and there's Mill 180 that have really, you know, Mill 180 is booming. The Keystone Buildings, which are actually now two buildings, one of them that has been recently purchased, he doesn't have any signage out there right now. And then at the end, on the other end of Mill 180, there is the Three Kingdoms Building, which is just warehousing. And I presume at some point in the future, that building will get sold. And it will likely be converted to what's already happening down there. That's, if, that's what my crystal ball says, but could be wrong. So, you know, you have to think about to some extent that, yes, Eastworks would be grandfathered, but then there's this competitive edge that happens when. So I think the Mill District really has to be carefully crafted in terms of how that is, how that's done.
I think it's hard to, I mean, I like that we're doing sort of the process and procedure stuff before we do the guidelines, but I also think that maybe we'll feel different about the appeal and special permits.
Sure.
Once we have the guidelines in place.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, maybe it's some, I mean.
I'd say leave this in there for now and we'll revisit it.
The highlighted portion?
Yeah.
I think it's a great structure.
Yeah, I like it.
I like that idea a lot.
Okay.
I mean, I think that we probably, like, structure-wise, we probably need to separate out the appeal from the special permit.
Yes.
But, because I think that that's just as likely to be an avenue for an appeal as a special permit, although maybe our bylaw's going to be so crystal clear that no one would ever dispute the building.
Okay, so I'll make a note to see if I can find a more appropriate location for that appeal language. That first bullet or letter or whatever it is. All right, so the only thing we're going to be keeping is this unusual site condition. So then here are the required findings. So this helps the ZBA saying, instead of just saying, "Anybody can go to the ZBA and ask for a special permit for a sign," which is essentially what we have now. It provides at least some guidance to the ZBA on what they could, you know, kind of like you with the special permit. You've got your sort of your checklist, which I think is really helpful to the board, because then they can sort of have guidelines to work off of. So, so for the findings, there are exceptional or extraordinary conditions applying to the land buildings, uses, or signs involved, which do not generally apply to other land buildings or signs in the neighborhood, such as, but not limited to, the presence of illegal, non-conforming structure, visual obstructions, unusual building location onsite, or unusual building design, architectural style, or historical significance. So that's A. B, the requested signs are consistent with the purpose and intent, which is why I changed "and intent" to make it, okay, of the sign ordinance. C, the requested signs are in harmony with the individual building and visually related to the buildings and the surrounding development. And D, the requested signs are not judged to present a safety hazard to vehicular or pedestrian traffic. So there's got to be, like, it can't be so strict that it's hard to meet, but it can't be too squishy either. So, I don't know. I feel like this is somewhat middle ground and a happy medium, but the board may want stronger language.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, C seems the squishiest to me. In harmony with is pretty subjective. I wonder if there are other examples of kind of aesthetic.
I could only find one bylaw in my research that actually had a finding section.
I like the idea of something along those lines, but I think it'll be hard when it comes down to it.
I mean, it starts to get close to the content base, right? Where it's like the look and appearance and, I mean, all that is technically kind of content now.
Well, it's not, it's not, it's content if it's based on what the words say.
Right, although we get into that weird stuff with like the coloring and things like that, right?
But well, with branding. So you can't say to McDonald's, "You can't use your McDonald's colors." Or you can't say to Dunkin' Donuts, "You can't use that purple." Right.
I mean, the thing is, is that it doesn't, it doesn't really give much guidance to anybody.
No.
In the top where it says, "Or signs in the neighborhood," I wonder if maybe we should go with "or signs in the neighborhood and zone."
Should it be "and/or zone?"
There are, I mean, there's definitely zoning ordinances and sign ordinances out there that they might not be in a finding section, but that have aesthetic requirements.
But we're going to have aesthetic requirements.
Yeah, okay.
So you have to think about, you have to think about, how is this different from?
Right, yeah, I'm sorry, this is my first time.
That's okay, no, 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 no. So it's, I mean, there will be, I mean, if you want to go back just briefly in the outline, and we've taken all the content out, so we're not, you know, we're not doing real estate signs, we're not doing political signs, all that stuff's got to go. So this is, we've got dimensional standards, we have location, construction, design, so there's illumination, placement, multiple signs.
So you're basically saying you can get the special permit, but you still can't really override the many, like, all of the aesthetic considerations that we're going to have.
Here's the thing to think about too. So the first one says about, where is it, about the second one, B, with the purpose and intent. So go back to purpose and intent.
Is that why you, oh, you said you were going to add this, why you added "intent."
So, "Protect the public health, safety, and general welfare. To protect the rights of individuals and businesses to convey their messages through signs. To improve traffic and pedestrian safety as it may be affected by distracting signs. To promote and protect business viability and economic opportunity. To encourage compatibility and harmony with surrounding buildings, land, and land uses and eliminate excessive and confusing sign display. To ensure the fair and consistent enforcement of sign standards." That's our purpose statement. That's what every.
I love those.
I'm serious, they're really good.
So that's what, I mean, the ZBA almost has to go back to that.
Out of harmony.
And say.
An example of a sign that's out of harmony.
An example of a sign that's out of harmony. Now, we don't allow billboards, but a giant billboard that blocks the view of Mount Tom and flashes lights.
Get that out.
And, you know what I mean?
I see it tripping on a lot of other things too, like size limitations.
Right, but if you're in the context of a special permit, it might tell you.
Isn't that difficult though, that if they said, "This is out of harmony," can't someone say, "Hey, that's my content, you're messing with my content."
I think it's a dangerous road to go down, but it's also kind of the only way that you might create a way to do that.
Yeah, it's the kind of thing that might be a vulnerability, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's not worth putting in.
I mean, the other thing is, like, when I look at the findings, like, under A for this, it's hard to imagine exactly how those findings work, because again, we don't have our guidelines in place. So like, that really might be something that changes. I mean, I guess I'm imagining like a visual obstruction, like maybe there are trees in front of a building, and so you can't have a sign against the face that you might be required to in that zone. So you put it perpendicular and hanging even though that's otherwise not allowed. Like, maybe something like that, but I can't, it's hard to imagine what those will be until we sort of walk down Union Street in your head and think like, what are things that might go wrong in some of these buildings or something like that.
So I think what you're saying is correct, is that this is a good base. Leave this now, we'll do the guidelines and then apply them as a litmus test to this.
Sure, I can just leave it highlighted as red and not accept them at all and just leave them there.
And that will help us form this.
Yeah, just to at least remember to come back to it. Do either of you two have anything to add or questions or comments? Nope? All right. It's a long process.
No, nothing? You were part of the first one, so I thought maybe you might have some good insight.
Yeah, well, I was just, this looks good to me, I was just curious.
Good, okay.
We're having more fun than we should going through this process, but. No, that's what I heard.
But anybody who, I mean, I think the board is really looking for guidance from the public, so anything that you see that you want to throw out.
I was keeping a close eye out, but I don't see anything that jumps out.
Okay.
I mean, I think we haven't really filled in the nuts and bolts, like the actual standards for the various zones, but we're trying to do this as an open process. And then once it's done, as far as we consider it, I think there's going to be a lot of areas where we're going to have hopefully full public hearings where people speak up and let us know. I mean, it's all sort of what the community wants. It's a balancing test, and so it's going to be public input.
Situations are going to come out of the woodwork that you would have never imagined.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
So I think there's going to be numerous points along the way where people can hopefully come and help guide us, because we're just a handful of people.
Like you're being here today, Clay, thank you.
Yeah.
This looks really great so far.
I'm really curious to see how we're going to put in the nuts and bolts, because that part to me is the really hard part. That's like something people with more expertise than myself.
Yeah, I mean, all I can really do is I can, I can, this is my, this is my research stack. So all I can do is just keep going back to my research stack and finding things that I think make sense or seem, or take them and then tweak them or, you know. And that's how, that's how I write zoning is, it's plagiarism. I steal from, no, it is. I mean, that's how good zoning is written. People make mistakes and other people take them and fix them and.
Yeah, they stole it first. But I think that the nuts and bolts is the exact part where it's going to be helpful to have public feedback, because that's where.
Actually, can I ask a question?
Sure.
There's one thing that I don't completely understand. We have ten point oh three section, you have any illuminated signs? I'm not fully understanding what the purpose is.
Oh, so we had had.
Did I not do it right?
No, no, that's right. So in the last version that we had, it had said "any illuminated sign." We're talking about this sort of concept of windows that might be not exactly on the glass, but they're hanging and they're intended to be directed out, and so.
Like CVS, I think, is a good example where they have. Like CVS, I think, is a good example where they have, they have all those windows and then they have like these, almost like shades that come down that have, you know, what's on sale that week or whatever. And so it's within one foot of the, of the window, so it's considered a window sign. And if it was beyond one foot, then it's more of an interior sign and we don't really...
So if somebody decided to hang that type of sign 13 inches back from the window, that would be okay?
Well, that's, that's sort of the kind of example we were thinking of. I mean, there are different places that use different numbers and the idea was trying to figure out what a number would be that is clearly intended to be directed out the window as opposed to, you know, a sign that's placed on a counter inside a cafe and is facing the window, but is clearly intended to be for customers inside the cafe, you know, specials or something, right? So you can imagine the scenario where the closer you get, the more it's intended to be directed out. And so, I mean, again, that's, I think that's a prime example of where people, we're going to need input if people want it to be 18 inches. I mean, I find it hard to imagine something that's two feet inside the window that's supposed to go out the window, but maybe we can think of a scenario where that does apply and where we would want to regulate it.
Well, like, when I saw it, the one thing I was concerned about was all the little flashing open signs.
Right. And so the reason we took out the illuminated is that we wanted to make sure that it included any kind of sign. And it was sort of red clumsily to have or illuminated. And so the idea here is this is a broad definition of a window sign. It could be illuminated or unilluminated or anything. And those open signs are something we've talked about already because that poses, I mean, those technically are signs and I think technically under the existing bylaw, I don't know that they're permitted because they're those, especially the ones that move, right? I don't think we're allowed to have LED signs that move. There's a lot of those ones that say open and then they have the little lights that go around them. I don't know that we have them specifically in East Hampton, but you see them in a lot of small businesses. And so, again, trying to figure out how we're going to bring those into the bylaw and then how we would regulate them.
So the way it's currently defined is a sign physically adhered to the inside or outside of a window surface. Window signs are not considered primary signs.
So for the window sign component, it's, right now, it has to be touching the window, either on the inside or the outside, to fall under our ordinance. Something that's one inch in, but clearly directed out the window, anything goes, basically.
So I think the CVS has posed some confusion on how the building inspector is supposed to regulate all of those shades that are directed out. And he's unclear on whether that, he should be including all of that in the calculation of what's allowed at that business or, and I think he hasn't because...
I don't think it falls under that.
Because it doesn't fall under it. So, you know, the question is, is that, you know, in his mind, yes, it's considered a sign, but there's, there isn't anything he can do about that in terms of calculating all of that signage together in, under that one business.
Which is a huge illuminated sign, I mean, like...
Well, they're not illuminated, but they're...
Don't they light them up from the inside?
Oh, they might light them up from the inside.
But it's all on the inside, so it's hard to...
Yeah, it's just an uplight thing.
So, a lot of interesting permutations here that we'll get to explore.
I found a typo.
Great!
All right, Libby.
It's on page three, 10.07, allowing signs instead of awning.
Oh, yeah, look at that.
They want to do a find and replace for that.
Shocking, ah.
Because spell check won't catch that, so you might want to keep that on your find and replace list.
All right, anybody else have any other questions or comments? What's next to be added in here, Jessica, do you know or are you just going to...
I don't know. It depends on how much time I can dedicate it to it before the next meeting. And we'll have an arts coordinator hopefully hired here soon, so that's, my time has been stretched a little bit trying to cover some of that stuff. So, you know, I'll prob, I'll do as best as I can and as most as I can and we'll just, just be what it is. But I think now we're starting to head into, well, actually, I probably want to focus on, I might try to flush out the enforcement section. So maintenance and removal, abandoned signs, dangerous and defective signs, and removal of signs, and try to finish that section out.
That sounds good.
And then if I can get that done, then I might move up to exempt signs, prohibited signs, and signs on public property.
Yep.
And then get into dimension, all the dimensional stuff.
Sounds exciting. Stay tuned.
Thank you for your input.
All right.
There's a sign at the end of the...
Any other administrative items?
No, but the minutes on that section are going to be weak, I'm just telling you right now.
There's video.
No, I don't think there's any other items at this time. I did sit on, actually, just to take a few minutes of your time. Actually, I'll put it on the agenda, I'll talk about it next time. It was about ethics and board ethics.